Okay, it's Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, and we're gonna start the Town of Sangamo's Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, and before we go to the next item, I want to apologize to anybody who was looking for the recording last time. It didn't get recorded, that was completely my fault. I must not have hit the button. I thought that I did. I can see now that I have, so. Item two, approval of the minutes, Select Board Meeting, 5:31, 2023.
Make motion to approve that, those minutes?
There, all three of us in favor. Item three, review of treasurer's warrants, 49, 50, 53, accounts payable, 48, 51, and 52.
Most approve AMB's ready.
Second?
All in favor, we're all three in favor. Open session, two minutes. We don't have anybody who wants to take our open session today. Oh, business. Item five, Town Hall Building, we've received an offer.
Yes, and it's in that envelope.
Okay. We all got to see this in advance because they got emailed to us, so we kind of know what. It's Sam Hutchins, Hutchins. Their goal is to turn this into residential housing. We all read it. He's offered the town $20,000 for the building. And there's obviously some more details we need to work out before we take this to the town. One, like, concerns, one of the things we need to work out is his anticipation as far as parking, and what the fire chief thinks we can give up, and how all that would work. But, this is encouraging. He wants, he wants to save the building and use it for housing, which would be, I would think it would be pretty cool.
Yep. So we have to look at the lot map, right, through the deed or the...
Well, if I remember, isn't the parking lots a separate deed currently? The buildings are the...
I meant to look at it today.
Parking lots are deed, and then this deed, I'm not sure how that all ties in.
And the fire station is a third deed?
Yeah, yeah. It's three separate leases, at least, right here.
But the fire department depends on a portion of this parking lot?
Yep, but I don't remember, that's what I mean, I haven't read the deeds enough for to know what is the, where is the actual line up in the parking lot for what goes to this property, or to the next deed, or to this deed, or...
This, this road, doesn't, it doesn't have a, it's not a street.
No, it doesn't have a name, no.
So, right away of that, would also, you could have joint right away, but that would also have to be addressed.
It would be interesting to see where the...
Which deeds are?
Right now, because it might be even answers itself.
And how many did he say that, I mean, just proposing the number of units was?
Four on the first.
That's what he, I had spoken to him on the phone, and that was kind of originally, his thought was four on the first floor. So, I, we need to, we need to see what he thinks he needs, and we need to see what the fire department thinks they need, and then we probably should go to an attorney and see what's involved in getting that, once we know what we need.
Right.
Because I think if we take this to the town, we want to have every, all of our ducks in a row, it seems to me.
Right, exactly how it would be split up and...
And all the part, he's, if, we wouldn't take it to town unless he agrees to what we find, and the fire chief is fine with what we find, and then we take it to town.
Is this something you could actually have a person prove that they have the financial ability to do what they're talking about?
Yeah, it probably would ask, you know, some proof of financing, but I, when I spoke to him on the phone, he was already dealing with I don't know if it was a credit union or bank, but they, they were already pretty deep into it.
Is this local Sam Hutchins?
Yep.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
He's got a pile around us.
Yeah, he's got an LLC that this is what they do.
Right.
He's going to the buildings, you know, down.
Yeah, it says we've converted and rehabilitated other buildings within the town.
But it's not, not one that's new to him. He's, this is kind of what he said they do. And when I spoke to him, the financing was the thing that he wanted to kind of get his ducks in a row, so my guess is
That's...
He got that.
Right, right.
Is this not Abbott Thomas, correct?
No.
No, nope.
No, he solicited us.
He, he just solicited us.
But that's the big thing that everybody doesn't understand. Personal building, what they can do over there
Right.
is far different than what the town can do to fix that building, so.
But, right, do you want to, you know, is it a liability for the town? I mean, do you take a small offer to get rid of the liability, or is it worth...
Well, the town would, if the town were going to fix it up, we know that's in the millions. The town isn't collecting any revenue on it, because the town owns it. If this person follows, well, first time they're gonna get $20,000, it's immediately gonna become a taxable property, and if he finishes his project... What's that?
That right?
Yeah.
That's right.
And if he finishes his product, his project, which you gotta assume that he believes is going to, or he wouldn't want it, you're looking at a significant taxable property.
Yeah, it says eight units, eight one or two bedroom units, so there's people living there and registered cars and all of them.
Yeah, no, so if, if that vision
Yeah.
comes to fruition, that's a win-win-win.
And would that then be zoned commercially? Does that happen with a multi-unit?
We don't have that, no.
Well, that's a conversation.
Yeah, we have a lot of tenements, but I don't think we, we don't...
No, but, well, do we need to have a conversation about commercial zoning, commercial zoning for...
I think some communities do.
Yeah.
But I own rental property in Lewiston, it wasn't, it was just treated as residential property. I don't know how typical that is.
Right. It might be worth looking into. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
No, but if you, if you're gonna change the entire community.
Well, based on the square foot, I mean, they go by square feet when they're doing evaluation, what properties were. Right, right, right.
But even if you didn't change it, even if it was just residential, it's gonna be worth, when it's done, it'll have pretty significant value.
Well, look at it this way, everything that we're seeing about it, there's no way that the town would ever afford to fix that building. So if he was gonna tear down and build something else,
His plan...
You're already, you're gonna spend more than 20 grand to get that building now.
Oh, he's gonna leave the building and rent it.
Yeah, he's gonna...
No, that's what he's, his...
Internally, so it keeps its, its visual structure.
Yep.
Yep.
That's what he said.
But it's his, once he buys it, he can do what he wants with it.
Yeah.
But even, I mean...
Yeah, his goal, initial goal was to, to do the first floor, get that all ready, rent that out, and then move up.
Right, yeah, generate some income.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
It'd be nice if he just, you know, changed the windows, but leave the visual aspect of the building, you know, the exterior trim.
I just wouldn't change the side, that's not looking all right anymore.
Want the logo?
Yeah.
So, I guess we gotta communicate with him. I mean, the, the vision that Lorna just described, if he goes second floor and then third floor, he's gonna have a parking issue. I mean, there's parking in town, but there's not a lot.
Right, this, I mean, firstly, I think we look at the deeds and see where the lines of everything is.
Yeah, no.
And then what we need to do from there, because if that's over enough, this may be just the...
It's just one to two bedroom, eight, one to two bedroom units.
It could park over here.
So you'd have two, possibly three downstairs, two to three upstairs.
Alright, yeah.
And then a couple in the third, so if you get a couple bedrooms, you could possibly have 16 cars.
Yeah?
Yep.
16 worth of excise tax.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this right here, it's not just about the sale of the building, it's the tax side of it, it's the excise tax side of it, I mean.
Oh, right, right. It trickles down.
Maybe it wasn't fixed when we shopped it then.
To that one?
It placed one of the shops in there.
Yeah.
Can return his balls. Well, so that's the next thing, one of us, or Lorna, would just kind of start that conversation with him, what he's anticipating.
And pull all the, I'll pull all the deeds, yeah.
Yeah, I'll pull all the deeds.
Yep, so we understand that. What is what?
Item six, new business, code enforcement, 30-day notices.
I've got, I went around today and reviewed all my properties that I put 30 on. The furthest out of town is not up to code. I don't know if we want to use names, but...
No.
I've got two properties that definitely are not up to code. One, I stopped to spoke with him and he was working today, the one I spoke of earlier. He hired a guy, said he couldn't have, couldn't have done it clear, I was busy, and I think, I think he'll come up. I'm just at the point right now where are we gonna move to legal? I believe the two furthest out of town on 23 need a, need a bump from the lawyer. I don't know where it goes from there. I've seen in the past where the lawyer spits out another 30-day notice, but maybe coming from them might boost a little bit more.
Are the, what's, what's the oldest timeline? In other words, what's the longest you've been trying to get one of these to conform?
Let's go back years.
Yeah, they've, they've been getting notices even before me, yearly.
Okay, so...
So it's time.
Yeah, I would, I would guess that's what I was going to say, if we're not, if we're not gonna do it now...
There's no license to even talk about it.
So, yes.
I mean, I've done the minimum to the, to the ordinance, it's a minimum of 30 days, so that's what I've done, I've already done the minimum.
I would just, my, I mean, my own opinion is, this has been massive complaints from everybody. If the town ends up with some legal costs, it is what it is. Everybody wants it.
Well, in fact...
I just wasn't sure how much you guys, you know, wanted to spend.
Well, we're gonna find out.
It's the town.
I don't know what it's gonna cost.
The town passed the ordinance, if they lose an appetite for this after they've spent a few thousand dollars, maybe they'll rescind their ordinance, but it's really...
We're enforcing what's...
I, I just noticed the letter, when I first came on, there was a letter, when George was in charge, there was a letter for one of these properties from the lawyer. And what the lawyer did was just explain it out, how it was gonna go, and gave them another 30 days. So I'm not sure if that's gonna happen again. But the first one I pulled into, the furthest out of town, I pulled in and said, when's my court date?
So, a part of your training, is there a, is there a procedural training, like?
We don't train on, on this property.
None of that sort of, okay. So, have you had any interaction with the town's attorney on, okay? Because it might be, I think, if the code enforcement officer's gonna enforce this ordinance, it might make sense for you to speak to the town's attorney, the documentation he would want you to have, the, I mean, to put the town in the best possible position to enforce this ord...
Yeah, in, in court.
Right.
The, the ones that I think we should go forward with have a long history.
Okay.
So, you know, come to court, it would be easier here, every, you know, every six months, here's photos, here's the global board.
Right, and I, I agree with what you're saying, but I also think by doing that, and again, I think it's a good question to find out from the attorney, because you're also gonna, you know, if you're gonna set a precedence, so the next time you go to somebody, it's, well, you waited three years for you on this one.
Right.
You know what I mean, so I don't want us, I would rather not get to the timeline we've had to in these situations.
I don't think I legally have the power to, you know, to bring the lawyer involved. I think it has to come from you folks.
I, you, at the most, I think we would greenlight it. The ordinance exists, so you're about to incur an expense, which we've hired you to enforce this ordinance, so I would say the most is you would come up and say, I'm about to spend some money, and we'd say, do it, or not. But, so if that's the purpose of this meeting...
I just don't know where to, you know, from here.
Yeah, and we haven't really done this, so we don't have a lawyer that necessarily specializes in this.
Been done once, been done once, I know that, but it was never...
And you might have other code enforcement officers that know of lawyers that are really good at this. And maybe you could reach out to them, and, because we don't...
Yeah, because we don't have a specific attorney that we go...
Do we have our same attorney we had the last couple of years?
Well, no, like, the solar ordinance, we picked someone who's specific to that.
With solar.
Okay, so if you knew, if you have fellow code enforcement officers, this guy's or gal's crackerjack at this.
I could just, I could ask her out.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it just might save a lot of time, money in the end.
Yeah, I thought we had somebody.
Well, we do, but it's, it's our general town's attorney, but it doesn't necessarily mean...
We had...
He also may know people who are really good in this area.
We've had cases where we, we've sent an issue to an attorney, and it clearly wasn't a fit for them, but they didn't admit that. And six, eight, nine months went by, and it was, it was really a waste of everybody's time.
Right.
So, and that's kind of why we approached the solar ordinance differently, because we wanted someone who knew. So, if you can find an attorney who does this for municipalities, we'd probably jump all over it.
Yeah, I'll just check a couple of the bigger municipalities.
Yep.
I, I, I talked to different enforcement officers, you know, different things.
Yep, so I would say you move ahead and
Yep.
the chips fall where they may.
Yeah, so I'm hoping that you've got enough documentation and history, if we do have the actual attorney, when he does look at everything, we're already well past the fire to image one another.
Yeah, I think, I don't believe one of them will go to court. I think if the lawyer just, you know, sends out a letter saying, you know, this is uninvolved now, blah, 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 one of them's gonna snap in, snap in line, and it's not a huge cleanup on that one.
Right, right. No, once the meter starts running...
The largest one has made the grievance, but not the only one. Definitely has made a lot.
Yeah, but if you've got a mountain and you move half the mountain, you've still got half a mountain.
Alright, I'll take a little...
Alright, cool, thank you. Item seven, town manager's report, Village and Bailey Cemetery.
Yes, the Village Cemetery had grubs, so that has been taken care of. It was done over the weekend during the rain, so that's all good to go. And Bailey's, we got the, that big maple down, so that's now gone, so I just wanted to update on that.
On the cemetery topic, we've got a neighbor down the road who's volunteered to go in and reset some stones in the French's Mills Cemetery.
Yeah.
And he said he spoke to you. And I thought that was generous of him to be willing to do that. I'm just wondering, is there some sort of, something that, so he's not liable, or he could be in there with a piece of equipment and someone's gonna call us and say, what's he doing in there?
Because it's not really the, actually, it's not really the town's responsibility to fix the stones.
No.
No, so...
But it is our property.
Right.
So, if we get...
At least a...
Some sort of...
General waiver.
Probably, I could do a waiver like I did with the gentleman at Planet Red.
Oh, yeah, that would work.
Yeah.
I just did a simple waiver saying, you take responsibility for...
Yeah, yeah, and that way, if someone calls you and says, what's he doing in there with? You'd say, no, he, he signed a waiver and the Select Board approved it, or whatever you want to do, but...
We can do that, I'll, I'll be there for him.
Yep.
Yeah, I can do a waiver with him.
Well, that's, it's funny you brought that up, because that's what I was, I noticed the other day. What, because we're almost gonna be in a really bad spot down here. I don't know if it's because of all the rain this year, but we've already had quite a few stones that have tipped over.
Right on the road.
Yeah, and if you look, there's like whole lines of them that are just...
Yeah.
We're like on the edge of a disaster.
It almost looks like graves are pushing out, the way that it's tiered.
Talked about that, though.
No, it doesn't look good.
I, I can have, I can have Bob look at that, because when it comes to, if it's not the stone that needs to be repaired and it has to do with ground, we can do that, and he can do that, and we're coming for that.
And the one that I saw is an old, old, old one, there's probably no family there.
Well, I mean, it just, if you really, now that I said it, you, you've looked, what it...
Yeah, I'll look and see, I haven't noticed.
Because, but I would think it'd be easier to straighten them
Right now?
Before they tip over and break, but, but I don't know what that's gonna mean, that's all.
I will reach out to Bob on that.
And you have a note on the docks?
Docks are in now, yes, yes, they are. You can go to Mahan, and you can go to Center Park, and your docks are in.
Super good.
Wow. Took a while, but they're in. That will make everyone happy.
Really good trigger, what we're gonna do when they come out, because I know it took a lot to get centers in.
Took a lot to get it in.
As far as to repairing it because of condition. If we pull them back out the same way we've always done this, there's just not gonna be any left there.
Yeah, they're gonna definitely need repair and...
Well, we need some brainstorming then.
That's what I'm saying, it's instead of waiting until we...
And the ramp, Jody, that you were mentioning, that we should fix.
Probably not fix.
It's not a tough fix, though, based on what Dale, it's a matter of getting in there with the, you can move those slabs around, it just need to be reoriented. But we should get that done sooner than later, if Chris or Warren would do it.
Probably we can.
I, I almost think, yeah...
You don't think they can?
Why?
Surely.
What?
No, we can fix our land launches.
I think we have to get, I, well, we do have to get permission.
Yeah, but you have, maybe you get permission, but you still can fix them.
I, I gotta, I gotta reach out to, I'll reach out to Lance and then, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Dexter just built a big fancy one. They didn't?
Yes, they did.
Oh, I'm sure they got permission.
Sure.
Yeah. Anything else? That's it? On the town manager's report, road commissioners' report?
So we've got some, Anderson Road was, had some gravel hauled in, and West Road, and there was also South Sangamo Grange had some because there was a washout on the path that we have. And then the culverts for Silver Smills, on the upper end, the bad ones are being replaced next week. So they'll get the culverts in, and then they'll move it over to the gray road to do their culverts. So, in the next week to two weeks, we'll have those culverts, four culverts in, so, and then he can start, and Thomas Road and the park are gonna get graded, and gravel's gonna be brought in.
Nice, good, good, good. What about Mike Road on Pat?
I, yeah, and I reached out to Gary Hopkins again, and he answered, his name's not Gary Hopkins, but Gary Bum Hopkins. I reached out to him and I said, I need to know what the date is, and he did reach out to me yesterday, and he said he will definitely give me a date. I said, well, you said, yeah, I said, so the next, the end of June is next week. So he said he tentatively will have a date, and it will be done before the end of June.
Good.
Okay, that's, there you go.
Anything else on the roads?
Oh, I, I should skip back a little bit.
Go ahead.
I, I got some rough numbers from Hamlin's. We're still waiting for some value on personal property, but with everything else figured in with the school budget, as expensive as it is, if we, right now, we could do 19, and that gives an overlay of 37.
What was our overlay last year?
37.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, at 15,94, yeah.
Did we use it all?
I think we used most of it.
Yeah.
But, and we can have an overlay of 45, and that would be 19,1. But Lisa just rocked, he said, we just got that one figure right now, personal property, they got it 625, but he said it's got a few more figures coming in, but I'm, I'm thinking it's gonna be right about 19. If we want, if we want the overlay to stay the same, very sad.
Unfortunate.
Unfortunately, yeah, last time it was 19 was 2017.
Yeah, percentage-wise, it's, it's a huge jump.
Yeah, it's gonna be a big jump, yeah. But the school budget was huge.
County was huge.
Mm-hmm, yeah, between the two. I mean, we're at 940,000 for... Those two? For the school.
For the school.
For the school.
A million bucks.
What was our actual overall increase, not counting the overlay?
180,000 for the school.
For the school.
No, 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 I mean, don't count the school, and don't count the, but our actual budget of our town...
Was 100, was 1,065.
Compared to last year.
Oh, last year, I didn't have the number for last year, it was...
You know what I mean, because I think these, this is gonna be...
Yeah, because I'll bring that sheet next time, yeah.
Yeah, it would be interesting to dissect it.
You don't want to break those three up, because when people start getting the tax bills, they're gonna go to the group. They need to understand that, you know, it isn't the town per se that's why you're in this.
Right, yeah, no, I'll bring it in the next meeting, I will bring that, I just...
Yeah, in fact, if, if you get it and send it to us, because I'd be, I, that's a really good question. I would like to know those three components.
So, once we nail down that last number, once we nail down that last number, we can, we can, yeah, we can set the mill rate and we get the tax bills out.
Okay.
Yeah, so, because they've already made all the adjustments to the homestead, where that's gonna go down to 19,75, that's all done, and, and all that's done. So it's just waiting for the mill rate.
That's another little ding.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Another thing, that's what I mean, I really think we're gonna have to have some bullet points for all this stuff.
Yep, I forgot about that ding.
And maybe it might be something we want to put on the website too, for them, for people to see the difference, showing the comparison of what happened in the year. Because we've gone down every year since 2017, you've gone down, and now you're going right back to where you were in 2017.
Yeah, and they're not, they're not one-time expenses.
Right, they're not one-off.
Our baseline, our baseline is...
They're just going up.
This is the new.
This is the new, yeah, yeah.
We've worked hard to go to where we want.
Lorna and Abbott, they're raising their taxes first time in five years too. Their school is 800,000 for Abbott, so everyone's feeling the effect.
Yeah, and they got the same county increase we got.
Yeah.
Where does Abbott go to school?
Gilpin.
Oh, 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 I got you, I understand, their portion, got it, yeah, yeah. Like, where do they go?
Whoa, okay.
Okay, yeah, as soon as you've got that...
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, because we can call a meeting, so we can get that done, and...
Yeah, if that's next week, you think it'll be next week?
Oh, it has to be next, it might be, I'm hoping maybe it'll even be by the end of this week, so we can just get it done, so get those tax bills out.
I'm around, if you guys are around.
As soon as I hear, yeah, we're just waiting for that one number. He thinks it's pretty close, but we just gotta, you know, wait just
Okay.
a little bit longer, he gets it all from the state, so.
Along the lines of taxes, just an update with regard to the solar, something that we might discuss or consider is taxing solar, these commercial projects at a commercial rate, you know, the...
Yeah, you spoke to Hamlin, didn't you?
I did.
Right, and it's, it's something that we, it's a decision we make.
It's a decision we make, which is interesting, because that wasn't the...
Why would that be?
Why would it be? Because it's our decision whether we want to tax that land at a commercial rate.
But...
But I don't get a, I don't get that option for any other business in town, do I?
That's a question.
That's 100% a question.
Right, because I was saying, did someone decide to tax Robinsons at a commercial rate?
That's what, that's...
Well, that's, I don't know that, I, I...
Yeah, or maybe this solar is a special situation.
Right.
And it may be something to do with the state, the why we have to, I, I don't know, it's just...
That's a good question, I don't, yeah.
Cut to the chase, my opinion is we tax it at the maximum that we possibly can.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so, convey that to Hamlin.
Yes, yes.
So, speaking of that, though, have we gotten a permit, application money yet?
No, we have not, no. Someone called a couple weeks ago, but I haven't received anything.
Huh.
Maybe, yeah, nothing.
This could change...
Yeah, it could change enthusiasm.
The dynamism.
Yeah, yeah. But speaking with Tyler, I didn't, and maybe, maybe you did, so, but I didn't, he seemed foggy about the taxation.
No, I, I thought he seemed pretty certain. It could, he didn't think it could be taxed. And when we shared with him that, he was like, oh, wow, hmm, so, I mean, we don't, unfortunately, we don't have the recording, but
I know.
he was gonna check, he was gonna check with Hamlin.
Well, and I asked, I asked, and you can, if you speak with Josh, Josh Adana, I haven't heard from him.
Well, and, and we did ask, there were two items.
The mineral rights.
Correct.
Mineral rights, and then...
And this taxation.
Taxation.
He did agree that if there was taxation, that the town would be entitled to an increase of payment that would represent what the taxation would be.
Right.
So, it's significant.
Right, that all wants to be in our lease or, or our contract with the town, when the, if, if and when the town...
We need to let Josh know right away, so I'd like to have that codified before we take an application fee.
Yes, yeah.
I will, I'll wait right after I sign the one.
Okay. I don't want anybody saying we got it under the wire.
Right, and what Josh told me is that right now, commercial property can be taxed at $30,000.
Yeah, he had mentioned that.
Right. And he said some towns are doing the first, the first acre at X, and then, you know, the, the rest of the acreage that the solar units sit on at less than that, but, but that's just because those, that's what those towns have decided. My opinion, and I, I think you agree, is why wouldn't you just do them all at 30,000?
Yeah, no.
And he did say that the state may step in and say, they can totally tax that.
Did you see, not, we'll stay on this topic, but the state has, they're gonna change the rules on taking the... Did you see, I'm not, we'll stay on this topic, but the state has, they're gonna change the rules on taking the excess value on on tax-acquired property.
Oh.
They immediately have reacted to that, so we're not gonna do it anymore, but anyway.
And the uh
Yeah.
The other one.
Yeah, um.
I can't remember what it's called, we're on a blank.
Yeah, but it's, you know, the locking in your taxes at sixty-five.
Yeah.
That's on the books, though, go away.
Which is good.
Too expensive. Um, the votes, the votes were paid for.
Actually, as far as questioning that, as far as the taxes going up, it does apply to this year though, right?
Yeah, so everybody's gonna get it this year.
And and it's already set up.
Oh, so this is gonna hammer the, every town is in the same boat.
Yeah.
No, the state is gonna get
Corporal.
Yeah.
Which means we're gonna get
I know, I know, of course, of course, of course.
Oh, wow.
They've already updated the system for that.
But if you go back to these solar projects, let's, uh, let's say there we got fifteen acres between the two projects that go in, fifteen times thirty grand, that's a nice little boost for Sangerville.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, that we're saying, you know, the school's gonna only go up and county's only gonna go up. How do we bring more money into this town? And and so
Seems like the only thing we have of value is
Exactly.
is solar estate right now.
So, yeah, that would definitely be something I think I would suggest we do. And I don't know whether we have to, when we get it from Josh, I
Yeah, whatever he
Right.
needs us to do.
Yeah, we'll do, okay.
If we have a meeting Friday, we would do it.
Okay, alright.
Hopefully it doesn't have to go to the, I I can't believe it has to go to the town, but
I don't know, I don't know. I'll try to find that out.
Yep, he will know, or well, MMA will know. So, um. Anything else?
As far as that's
Tyler was gonna get back to us too, he has not.
No.
Okay.
Um, I had a conversation with the fire chief a week or so ago, about a couple of different things, but one thing that I wanna bring up for sure from tonight. Um, I had read online about Dover's ordinance as far as for their emergency services. So, and I don't know a hundred percent of the details of it, that's why Chad and I was talking about it, but basically, the way I interpret it is if you get into any type of situation in Dover and you're not a resident, whether you require police, first responders, fire truck, whether it's a car accident, um, they've listed this stuff all out and you're gonna be billed for that. They're gonna bill your insurance. And as the way I read that, it kinda sounded to me was, where does mutual aid fall into this? So if Dover comes to Sangerville for a car accident or for a house fire, I wasn't sure by reading it, do, uh, is Sangerville residents gonna get charged for it? Or the potential of being charged. The only other thing that, as Chad and I was talking about it, um, as long as I've been a part of the budget committee or selectmen, I've never seen this mutual aid. So, I don't really, if that's our route, I think it's, it needs to be a bigger conversation. So Chad was supposed to reach out to the chief to find out more about that, but I mean, if it's an ordinance, it is what it is. It's not really gonna be a two chiefs interpretation.
Right, right.
But this could get big in a hurry, I think, or it's not gonna be a big deal, one of the other.
Well, they uh, they also, there are nice townships, like Atkinson, I don't know how many, that's one that they cover, right? But that menu of fees
Applies.
is gonna apply, but in the, in that instance, I I'm imagining that that fee is gonna go to the county.
Sure.
Which means we're all gonna collectively support the Dover Fire Strafe Fire Department.
That bill is gonna, that bill, right, right, is gonna go
Now, I, again
And the income is gonna go to Dover.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
And when we, we're all, we have a mutual aid agreement with Dover, so I, there's, I could foresee a scenario where Dover and Sangerville are sharing a call and Dover gets revenue for it and Sangerville's a part of it, but they don't get any revenue.
So Chad, getting back to Chad, did he know all of that or?
No, of course he
No. First he heard about the billing and, so he knew nothing.
No, he wasn't impressed by it.
So do, is it possible to have Chad come in and talk with us? I mean
He was planning on being here, not this, me, this meeting or next, because some other things he wanted to talk to the board about.
The first thing we probably ought to do is get our hands on that ordinance.
Well, that's, but I think instead of dealing with fire chief, the fire chief
That's exactly what I'm
It really ought to be, reach out to Dover and
I'll reach out to him.
And then
What do they believe is gonna happen?
Sure.
Right.
Right.
And if it's an ordinance, wouldn't it be on their website?
I'm sure it is, I've expected it.
I'll check, I'll check the website. They have most ordinances on it, so I will look into it.
Uh, and you mentioned that they're gonna charge the insurance company.
Yep.
If a person doesn't have an insurance, insurance.
I didn't really get a vibe on that.
I mean, can you legally pick and choose who you bill?
How do you pick and choose who you're billing if it's resident or not? What if you own land in Dover, but you live in Sangerville? You're still a taxpayer.
Yeah, I, well, I wonder if they have a provision for all that.
Right, I didn't, like at the end, I didn't read every step of it, but
It's, seems complicated.
Yeah, and my only, my, when I talked to Chad about it, my concern is, and with no disrespect to Chad or the department or anybody, everybody here trains to the best of their ability and they go and they do these things to the best of their ability for the training level that we have, and a lot of the things, you know, that they do, it's more, it may, you fall under just general liability laws. Um, but when you start sending out a bill, to me, you're turning yourself into a professional department, you know, and who's to say that you could get into a car accident and chop a roof off a car and insurance, and you build the insurance company and the insurance company goes back and says, you didn't need to do that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and and flip that bill back around, or I need to see where billing insurances may not be in the town's best interest.
I don't know, I just can't imagine getting into the billing business either. I mean, it's a nightmare. Billing insurance is a nightmare.
Again, I mean, from their point of view, it's nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Sure.
True.
So they send out a bill, they they don't get anything now, so, but I just see this whole mutual aid, if if more and more towns start adopting this model, I don't see how the mutual aid thing works.
Works, right, right, right.
Because, I mean, we're basically the monkey in the middle.
Sure.
It's like, look at the, I was for mutual aid and
Yeah, the majority of what we do right now is mutual aid. Which kind of, I mean, that's basic math, I mean, you're surrounded, there's more towns than you are, so
Right.
in, so, yeah, but they're, they're receiving compensation in the form of towns that they cover for. And now in the, in this case of Dover Fire Strafe, this ordinance, we don't get any of that money.
As far as we know, is Dover the only town doing this billing thing, or are there, is Steelford and Dexter?
I don't know.
Yep. Well, it'd be good to get to the bottom of that. I mean, we need to
I will see, I'm curious about the ordinance now.
Yeah.
I saw the menu of fees.
A few years ago, it was, it was bouncing around and it was all about car accidents.
Yes, in fact, Chad may have mentioned it.
Somebody here did come to us about it, about wanting to, and I can't remember if it was
So like you get Florida plates, we bill you.
Yeah. Huh, I could remember that conversation.
Alright, uh, so we'll, the three of us will kinda dig into that, see if we can get a feel for that ordinance.
Yeah, and or have Chad, if Chad gets any input, if he comes to a meeting, he did say he would?
I, he's supposed to be coming, because he has other things he would like to talk about.
Okay, okay.
But I would be interested in town manager, town manager
Yeah.
what you get for a vibe, and then what we get for a vibe, fire chief, fire chief.
I'll reach out to him.
You know what I mean?
And then, and then if they all drive with what we're reading in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Oh, we'll be doing it um, in two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, first Friday of the month.
Oh, yeah, that's, and you're talking about town stuff, right?
Yep, yeah.
That's good.
There's an agenda, I can add that to the agenda.
There you go.
Anything else?
Um, well, I have a couple things. One, um, I did, um, I'm sort of trudging ahead with getting the application for, from Susan Collins' office. I did get the applicant, well, the application from last year for, for get grant money for perhaps our new municipal building. And so I, I have that and um, it's long, I mean, it's pretty simple, but long. And um, and so I'm going to start just working on putting all those pins together as far as that's concerned. Along those lines, Plymouth Engineering.
Yeah, Jody and I have both been trying to speak, Jody's an engineer and I am not, so I just thought it'd be helpful and you have been helpful. Um, I did finally get to speak to Adam today. I, they still are kinda like, we just wanna make sure you guys
I can't, we can't get any traction with that.
We both said, green light, green light, go, go, go.
Yes.
And they're, and so he said he wants a meeting with us and I said, whenever you're ready.
Number four, mostly.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And I
I'm available.
Said, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, yeah.
So that may hap, if if we're gonna have a meeting, I will, you, one of us will reach out and say, hey, we're having a meeting.
Right, okay.
Um.
Yeah, it just seems like we can't get past the threshold of the door.
It feels like you are when you're meeting with them.
Yeah.
But
And at the end of the meeting
And he, right now, he's feeling like July is kinda pushing him. So, anyway, that's where we're at.
Okay.
He is familiar with this program that you're, you cited earlier though, and he feels like this, uh, certain adjustments that they would make to their proposal, if we go in that direction, and I said, well, that's great.
Right, right, right.
And I did, I also share with him that we've got an offer on this, the the old building. So we really don't need them to work on a package
Right.
if we have a special town meeting, because we've gotta vet this first.
Right.
And so
Oh, I think you want to do, I think that's gonna help you vet that.
So you think we should go even farther?
I think, you know, if, you know what the last one was like?
No.
Everybody wants answers. But the other thing, and this is where I struggle with this whole thing, and it's it's the twenty-five people or so that come to town meeting that are all pro. As far as my phone ringing, that's the only twenty-five people there is around the town. The top of, I mean, everybody I talk to, the majority, they're all, you know, they want us to go to a new building, they all want money. But the problem is, is those people aren't the ones that go to town meeting.
Town.
So, that's my, I am very confident when I say the majority of the town does not want to spend that kind of money on that building, but
Well, I would say when we get to the special, whether it's September, October, one of that happens, um, that it's incumbent upon us, if we want these items to pass, is to promote them. Call people, maybe form a committee, but if, if each of us got fifteen people to show up that don't normally show up
Right, right.
then you've got a very, pretty good shot at these, because these things make sense.
Oh, they do, and that's the problem, so.
Yeah.
But, but we can be proactive.
Yeah, yeah.
So, alright.
Okay, so with Adam, we'll, we'll just keep
Yep, I, I
We will be having a meeting by next week anyways.
You know what?
Of course.
I will, we'll, we'll let him know that. I'll send him an email, say, we've got a meeting coming up in the next seven days.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Alright, anything else?
One other thing, just concern. Um, I noticed in our little parking down here by um, one more, Monty and Square, you know the parking? That there's always a four wheeler on a trailer, side by side on a trailer, and sometimes it's attached to a car and sometimes it's sitting there very conveniently.